Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting and our truth in taxation hearing. All right, our first audio pledge, I would direct everyone's attention to the microphone on the ceiling because that's brand new. So that's your tax dollars hard at work. We used to have individual microphones that looked like a 1970s game show host. And I think that this is going to be a significant improvement. Thank you for being here. I think that this is an important part of being a resident of a community. And my hope is that we can come together and have a conversation. That's the way I envision this discussion tonight primarily. So but it does have some formalities that we'll want to follow. And I will ask that since we do have this new microphone, the others didn't pick up background noise quite as readily as this one does seem to. So if you are inclined to chat or maybe go into the hallway and are you pointing to the hallway? Are you pointing to Wayne?
I'm just pointing to somebody else because all the rest of the figures are pointing to me.
Okay, yeah, yeah, well, deflection. All right, my name's Brent Winder. I'm the mayor. And I just got to say that this is my last truth in taxation hearing. So and it's dorals as well, so it is with a significant sigh of relief. But let's call this meeting to order. And I also want to recognize that Councilmember Malkovich is joining us remotely. And is Brian also there? Okay, I can't see who is online. Okay, and Councilmember Hutchings is also there, so both members of our council. So if we could get Councilmember Hilliard to offer invocation. And then Brian, I know you're just a tiny little screen, but will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be able to gather together this day. We're grateful for those that are in attendance from our wonderful community. We are grateful for their voices and their desire to contribute to this meeting this day. We are so very grateful for their willingness to be here. We're grateful for this wonderful community to which we have, for our beautiful mountain, for the beautiful animals that we have here and the wonderful people. We pray that thou will watch over us, bless us and protect us, especially during this very, very dry year. We pray that thou will protect us with thy hand from fire. Pray that thou will also, if it be thy will, let thy heavens open and pour out rain upon us inasmuch as we are in great need of that moisture. We pray that thou will also watch over us this day, help us that we may be able to be directed by thee, that thy inspiration may be able to help us know what best to do for our wonderful community, to service the needs of our infrastructure, for our other amenities and supports that we offer to our community. We pray that thou will continually watch over us, bless us and protect us when we say these things, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thanks to both of you. So item four on the agenda is the public hearing portion of the truth in taxation and the certified tax rate. So we could do this a couple of different ways. I was envisioning that after you hear from us, then you could make your public comment. But if anybody has something that they would like to say early on, I don't want to thwart those efforts if anybody has to leave early. So I'm gonna do this a little bit informally. But is there anybody that feels a need to speak right now, or would everyone mind holding until we've kind of made our case, so to speak? Anybody online?
I think it makes sense for you guys to make the case, and then we can talk about pros and cons of the different options, right?
Perfect, yeah, I agree.
I think there's general questions from many of us in regards to general taxations and how money is spent. So hopefully there's time to have a short discussion on that to enlighten us a little more.
Yeah, I agree with you entirely, and that's the very direction I hope we proceed. All right, so just as a few opening remarks. As far as what a truth in taxation hearing is, I, over the four years that I've been mayor, it's been a learning exercise for me. You know, you read on social media, you read the news about cities that are having truth in taxation hearings. And you think, once again, these greedy, insatiable government entities have their hands out or have their hands in my pocket. And as I have sat in this seat and as I have gone to trainings associated with the duties of my office, I've actually come to realize that it's not exactly that. So and for those of you who already know this, I know Dave Pratt is well versed in certified tax rates. But if you'll humor me, I'd like to give some overview as to what exactly it is. So every year, there's a statutory construct through which the county operates. It sends us basically a certified tax rate. And that certified tax rate takes into account property values. And so the intent is, as property values increase, it's undesirable, considered undesirable, and I would agree with this, to have the tax rate even stay the same. And then as property values potentially skyrocket, then the taxes that the residents are obliged to pay through those property taxes also skyrocket. And so what the state has established is a certified tax rate system where the value of the homes is taken into account. And then the county issues that certified rate to essentially keep our revenues flat. And so it does grow some relating to certain growth. But the intention is to keep the revenues flat. And it doesn't have any sort of an inflationary index. It doesn't take into account rising costs of things. And so even on the most disciplined budget, where it puts us is the value of the money that we get every year is decreasing in value. And so the idea is that we bring it before the residents and we make our case. And and I think that there's value in that, but I do think that it can misrepresent the purpose of these sorts of hearings. Because it's not that we just are, there's never enough. It's something, okay, you've already got a comment.
No, it's just a question.
Okay, let me, let me just get through this point, and then I'd love to hear it. So it's something where, you know, we have to account for rising costs. Otherwise, the infrastructure that we are stewards over, it goes into decay because we just don't have enough to meet the needs of the community. And so that's what this hearing tonight is, is that in coming before the residents and requesting any difference in the rate that the county has offered as the certified rate requires this. And so the good news, though, is that because of some additional research and additional data that we, well, through our Public Works Director and our Director of Finance, it actually appears that no increase is going to be needed. But we still wanted to hold the hearing because we wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to hear how your tax dollars are being spent. Okay, go ahead. Actually, if you want to just come up to this table.
It's a quick one. So what's the dynamic of new lots being developed with new people moving in? How does that help the tax base?
So that.
We have the last three years, I'm assuming we've had more people move in and finish their houses than ever before in Woodland Hills history, right?
Right, well, I don't know about the historical, but that's the growth that I was talking about. So that does add to our revenues. But as far as the, so the growth does add to the revenues. But assuming, you know, we're taking a snapshot of where we are, the revenues do remain the same. So and that's what the increase relates to. Because it accounts for growth, but it doesn't account for rising costs of, you know, various things that are required to run a city.
Plus the density of most communities have quarter acre lots. And we have three quarter to one to two to some that are five. And so you're only getting tax off of five acres or two acres or one acre versus in a city, say, like Elk Ridge, where you're getting it off of all these quarter acre lots and you're getting a lot more. So we're just, because of our bigger lots, we get a lot less tax base than others.
We all know about that. We love the big lots, but we hate the tax implication, right?
Right, but that is the price of open space. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, thank you for your service in city council. We're very pleased to be here. It's a great place to live. Could we, as the taxpayers, receive a statement that shows the gross income of the city from all sources for the last couple of years and this year?
Yeah, absolutely.
Show, show how you're gonna spend it, but we'd like to know how much money is coming in from all sources.
Yeah.
Dollars on the pie chart.
Yeah, so our Director of Finance, he is actually out of town. I don't see him. Chris, are you here?
But it's on the budget, the approved budget, and it does show the total revenue. And then it shows the total expenses on the budget that we have.
Okay, and so our Director of Finance is here. So yeah, that is absolutely something that I think we already do provide, like Janet said. That's something that is part of the public record now as to how to best find it. That would be something that our recorder Jody could probably assist with.
If you just wanna put your name down on the sheet at five and ask for the information, I'll be happy to email it to you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, all right, and then to that point, I, you know.
You do have Carrie raising her hand there.
Oh, okay, yeah, Carrie, sorry.
For those of us online, we cannot see who is speaking. So can you have everyone please identify themselves prior to asking the questions, just so that we will know who's? We, we know a lot of your voices, but we can't see your face. So if you, but so if you can just have everyone identify themselves, that would really help those of us on the council who are on the call.
Yeah, no, of course. Good suggestion. You can hear, okay, though, right? The sound's coming in.
Yes, the sound is fabulous.
All right, nice. All right, so with respect to how the money is spent, you know, there, there's a variety of different ways that we have to sort of keep things afloat here, keep the lights on. And I won't go into the minutia of it, but there are a few major buckets that it primarily falls into. And so I just want to go through each of those. And the first one being legal, it's been a regrettable turn in our city the past few years. I'm an attorney by trade. And one of the reasons I felt that I could potentially make a difference as mayor is because the city was embroiled in a lot of legal issues relating to a particular property. And it has been an expensive and unfortunate turn. I will say, though, that, and I hope that the general takeaway from this meeting is optimism because I do feel very enthusiastic about the direction we're going. And I'm saying this as an outgoing mayor and soon to be sitting on that side. Someone that has, you know, certainly a stake in this, but not any decision making authority.
Where is legal on this one?
Attorney, admin attorney, 11%.
And I don't, and not all of that is tied to disputes because there are, for example, development agreements that we have to enter into and draft and negotiate with developers. You know, there, there are a variety of legal needs that we do have, city attorneys that we engage for those purposes. But but with respect to the disputes, I just want to give an update on that. So at the time, there were five ongoing civil cases relating to this same property at the time that I was elected, and all of them have been dismissed and their associated appeals have been dismissed. What was that? I didn't hear that. And so I, we're, we're going in a very positive direction that it's a slow process. And this particular party has recently filed a new suit. And we requested dismissal, but we are also able to take the offense this time around where we can now go and ask the court, and we did, we asked the court to hold this party, to deem them as a vexatious litigant. And if successful, I think our arguments are good. If successful, that party would actually need to get, then I would point out that this party does not live in the city anymore. And they would be obliged to get permission from the court before they could file any additional proceedings, or they would have to hire an attorney, because that's the, that's the difficulty that we have now in the current situation is that they are a pro se litigant, so they have no real out of pocket expenses, but it's very costly for us as a city. But like I said, all the cases have been dismissed with this one outlying one. And I have a high level of confidence that we will prevail on that one, too. And I know not everybody sees eye to eye on how the city should handle that. For my part, I have not found there to be any merit to those claims, but different minds can come to different opinions. Second, and I'm glad that David Stones is here, plows. I hope that you have come to appreciate how well plowed our city is. Ours is the safest city in South Utah County, I think, in a winter storm. And it's very easy to tell once you have left the other cities, the neighboring city roads or the county roads, and entered into our city. But with that, there are costs associated with equipment. There are costs associated with maintaining that equipment in a very harsh environment. There's salt that has to be purchased. There are drivers, which I would also point out, they are, I think, all residents, right Ben? Or David?
Quite, but mostly.
So for the most part, they're residents, and it's, it's something that I would consider an act of public service. I know that the plows are out almost without exception every Christmas, Eve and Christmas. And so this is not something you get rich doing, but it is a labor of love and no question. But that they, I think, provide a tremendous value to our city. But again, that does cost money. Third is law enforcement. We have Sergeant Dutton back here. As a city, we don't have a local police force. We contract with the sheriff's office. You know, there are differing points of view on whether it's better to have a local police force for my part. And I believe that the council is in agreement on this. I think there is great value in contracting with the sheriff because we get the full wave of all their law enforcement resources. So I mean, heaven forbid, we'd need a SWAT team. We could have the sheriff SWAT team come in or any of the other resources that we would just not be able to utilize if we did that in-house. But it is an expense. Human resources, I can't sing the praises of our staff enough. And as I think will become more apparent as we talk about some of the recent improvements that have been made in our Public Works Department, everybody, Jody, Lori, Chris, Ted, Toby, and then Wayne, who is basically unpaid. And I, we consider Sergeant Dutton's staff, but his salary is paid separately. But they're all very capable, they're all residents, and they have the same concerns that any of us as taxpayers have. They want to do things in an efficient way, and they want to get the greatest value for their money. And I think that we have a dream team, and so I think that it's money well spent.
And they never go home.
Yeah, they never leave the office. Human resources, okay, you talked about that. Fire and EMS. I know that some of you here are on the fire department or serving in EMS. And, you know, this is another thing that there's always the potential that we could contract out that service. But the way I see it is it's not an inexpensive effort, but it, one, provides an immediate response and gives us a very close access to both firefighting and not ambulatory, but EMS services. And I also think we got, you're not Buddy the Elf, are you? You are Buddy the Elf, yeah, we got Buddy the Elf here. And I just think that as a matter of community spirit, you know, it brings people together in a very meaningful way. And sorry, I didn't mean to just blow your cover.
No, I don't, I'm just looking for Santa. I was looking to see if Santa was here.
But it's, it's, again, it's another area that has a sizable price tag tied with it. But under Craig North, who was our previous fire chief, and our current chief has continued this. We actually have a wildland crew that is deployed, and they are actually generating revenue for the city. So not only are they keeping us safe, because when they're not deployed, they are engaged in fuel mitigation efforts here in the city. And then beyond that, we are able to deploy them, they're, they're going to neighboring fires, and we get paid for that, yeah. Will you state your name?
Tom Brighton, Oak Drive.
Tom Brighton, Oak Drive, thank you.
So are you saying that after all the labor costs and the equipment costs, we're getting more revenue than that costs, or it's a?
I wouldn't go so far as to say that, but it offsets the cost. The fire department as a whole?
No, no, this wildfire crew.
Oh, no, that, that is making money. That's in the black.
So after all of our expenses, they're generating more revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's one of these posters, I think that one addresses it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
It's cool.
And yeah, in the back, if you'll state your name, I hope that you can reach the mic. We'll get the online people to let us know.
So are we still in?
You gotta state your name.
Jessica, or I'm going on Woodland Hills Drive. So are we still in the admin proof services that's including the EMS, the plow? Or are we, each one on the pie chart is different?
Well, I'm not going through this pie chart one section at a time, but we can certainly answer questions as we go through it. I'm just going through different buckets.
The city has, but I'm just saying, when you're talking about snowplow and the EMS and the fire and the police, are we in admin salary wages?
Well, so it's actually divided up in a few different categories. So like with some of it, the salaries would come, and Chris would be able to better answer this, so.
Because it shows admin. She's wanting to know if fire and everything is included in here.
Yeah, Chris, do, the firefighters, they get a stipend, but they're not, they're a volunteer.
Yeah, we're just very careful. I just want to make sure we're stung there. I.
Okay, I don't know if I answered your question. Well, I probably didn't, but Jody did. All right, good enough for me. Okay, so fire and EMS, again, you know, it does have a cost, but I, in my opinion, the benefit certainly outweighs it. And then the biggest part of our annual budget goes to our public works. And so I think that, okay, actually, I said that we would jump to you and the finance committee, but let's just go over some of the, before we do that, we're gonna do kind of a few years in review. So Jody, if you wouldn't mind, go to some of the.
Yep.
Yeah, so some of you might know, we recently reorganized and had personnel changes in our Public Works Department. Our, our current Public Works Director, he's been with us for about a year and a half. Ted Mickelson, he is also our fire chief, but he's a resident and he's also a licensed professional engineer. And since we were lucky enough, and, and he has also got Toby. How do you pronounce Toby's last name? Okay, what Jody just said, Toby is working with Ted, and they are making huge strides. And Toby is also a resident. They're making huge strides in terms of our public works. One of the big ones that we just recently were able to complete was our well. I mean, it doesn't get any more critical than our water system. And so what we had, and this is speaking to the approach, I believe, that as far as I'm concerned, Ted brings tremendous value in terms of his philosophical approach to our public works projects. And in the time that he's been here, he and Toby have gone from what was a functioning well, but a well that definitely had some, some weak spots into something that is humming. And you can see the before and after pictures up there on the screen. And so that, that's a huge, so as it says in the bullet points, upgraded controls, increased pipe size, completed automated backup power, finished electrical, and this is all engineered, electrical, mechanical and building, paved access to the wellhouse that was formerly a gravel road. And then this is not at our well up on, by the switchbacks, but the Maple Canyon well. We just also recently had to, we jointly own that with Salem, and we recently had to replace the casing in the Maple Canyon well. So that, that's the water, so that, that is a huge leap forward, in my opinion. And then Jody, will you advance to the next one? Yeah.
Mark Hopkins, Oak Drive, is there a surplus of water?
Well, I don't know exactly how.
Depends on the day.
Where does it go?
Oh, okay, we have a tank, we have a storage tank.
I know that, but if there's more than you need, where does that go?
And the well shuts off, right? Do the pump shuts off?
What we need, we get to a certain level, and then we don't do the pumping anymore. As far as do we have enough water, we have sufficient water shares for what we're using.
So maybe what, is that what you're getting at?
If there's a surplus, who gets that? And how much does it cost?
We don't pump it.
Yeah, I, I, there's, there's not a, I mean, we draw from the aquifer and we share that aquifer with a number of neighboring wells. And so we fill up to our capacity of our storage tanks.
We just pump what we use or take what we need and use it, and there's no surplus that's sold to any other municipality?
No, there's nothing like that, no.
You can't do that.
Yeah, and, and, and there are codes, so, and that's one of the things, we do need more storage because ultimately, for firefighting purposes, we will need to have another storage tank because there are gradings that are applied. I mean, we have enough for our culinary use and our residential use, but as far as like the firefighting element of it, we really should have another tank, and we're working toward that, but they're north of a million dollars. And so those are things that, you know, you have to make prioritized as you can. But as far as selling surplus water, no, there's, there's nothing like that going on. But maybe we should, maybe we should bottle up Mount Olympus spring water. It's really good. And ours is better, yeah.
Gerald Sorenson, Oak Drive, it's my understanding that the Maple Canyon well is 40% owned by the city and 60% by Salem, is that correct?
That's correct. And that means that we have to pay 40% of the cost, like this casing that we just had to kick in, you know, our 40% share, you know. So it does bring an expense, but that is, yeah, we are a joint owner of that. Okay, thanks for those questions. All right, so, and then roads. So we've got, we completed Bear Hollow, we completed West Loper, we have completed the pavement management plan. There's approximately nine miles of road contracted for microceiling in the fall of 2025. And then approximately two miles of road scheduled for Mill and, it's Mill and Phil, right? Also in late 2025. So we're making, again, I believe, great progress. And ultimately, the intention is, and this is something that Janet and the finance committee are gonna talk about over the next few years, we anticipate having every road in Woodland Hills. It would be a maximum of seven years, but we could do it faster, having every road essentially redone and brought up to specs. And then from there will be maintenance, which is considerably less expensive than rebuilding the roads that we have. And so again, this is to the credit of everybody that works in the city. But I, I, I credit Ted and his vision and his execution of his vision for us making such great progress.
Dave Peterson, Oak Drive.
Yeah.
So who would be doing the maintenance on that? I spent five years as volunteer with the Public Works Commission, the road side. We had a lot of very good professionals on, on there. And I'll be honest, every single time the city council rejected every, every recommendation we had, and then we paid Corbett, you know, 150 grand with overtime included. That was a waste of money, in my opinion. This person can't be working that many hours and be effective. So what are we gonna do differently this time to make sure that the monies we're asking for are adequately used rather than just frittered away on OT? And, and we put up a lot of work, and not once did the city council actually listen to what we said.
Right, we're hiring professionals, we're shifting from the approach of where we kind of tried to marshal more of a volunteer staff. And even with completion of the well, we are migrating away from sort of cobbling things together, and we are having things professionally done, and the same would apply to the road maintenance.
Well, at the time, the, the, the Public Works Commission had seasoned professionals in their fields on that commission.
Yeah, but are you doing the repairs or you're just making recommendations? I'm talking who's doing the repairs.
No one was doing the repairs at the time.
Yeah, so that's the difference.
You had, you know, someone we were paying a lot of money to and didn't do anything on the repairs.
Well, and, you know, with all due respect, I, I, I agree that philosophically, I didn't see eye to eye with our previous public works director, but we're on a different track now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sherry, all right, you gotta say your name.
Sherry Burger, Deep Forest.
There was, I thought the reserve study that Ted put together about when roads are gonna be done and what roads are gonna have the repairs, does that also include drainage? I mean, I'm thinking of Broad Hollow. Road and we still have the drainage problem, we're kind of wasting our money. Does it include drainage?
Yeah, so Broad Hollow, we are actually applying for a FEMA grant to get culverts installed along Broad Hollow that would tie into the mitigation basin right by your house. And so it would direct the drainage in that particular area, but we, we are, that's another area that we are definitely in need of. But it is something that would be rolled into, I mean, it might not solve every drainage issue because we've got a few in the city, but it does in a comprehensive way. It's not going to just be rebuilding roads only to have them undercut by drainage problems.
So we are looking at the drainage, I mean, for me?
Yeah.
I get everything from the tanks coming down.
And I don't know what the specific plan is for that road, but I know that that is part of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, and so bringing us back to roads, like I mentioned, there are a couple of different options that we, as, as a council and me as mayor, over the past several weeks, months, we've been trying to put together a, a, a very specific plan that, like I said, will eventually have all the roads in Woodland Hills completed and bring them up to specification. And so Janet, who is our council member on the finance committee, and then our members of the finance committee who are here, we've got Tim and Aaron, and I don't see Mike Taylor, who is also on the committee, but he has also been part of this process. But Janet, will you just walk everyone through?
Yeah, if you guys wanna come up, I'll, well, I don't want to, but I will if you guys will. So you guys all got your tax notices and you saw an increase and I wanted to talk about that and talk about why that happened. Uh, we had a pavement management project. They did a survey, figured out a timeline to do the roads. And there are some roads, if you look at your colored one, I'm gonna still, cause I don't have my colored one. The ones with the blue kind of broken lines, those are not included in this because those ones need water lines done. So those ones will be done when the water line is replaced. And, um, the mayor had already said that, that Ted is actively looking for financing for those. There's no point in spending $250,000 to fix the road and then have it torn up six months later. That's just not gonna work. So, um, and that's just not cost efficient. So we're working on those, but everything else, um, all the other colors are part of this pavement management project. And when it was first proposed to us, um, it was a four-year plan and it was pulling a lot of money out of savings. And it was pulling more money out of savings than we were comfortable with. And the question that we kept asking was.
Could you be specific when you say more money? I mean, how much?
Well, the council would like to see, we, we did discuss this quite a bit. The council would like to see about $250,000 emergency money in our general fund. And the reason for that is that if, if we had a fire, we have to be able to pay for helicopters and water drops and things like that to save our city. And so we need to have that reserve in there. And we weren't comfortable with draining it down to being like significantly below that. I mean, would anybody be comfortable with a city only having, say, $50,000 in savings? I wouldn't. Um, and most of us didn't have a comfort level for that. So we, we looked at scenarios and we talked a lot and, um, it was suggested that maybe we raise taxes 5% and most of us weren't comfortable with that. So we said, we asked Chris, what about 2.5%? And so that's what you guys got in your notices. We had an earlier deadline where we had to decide and we didn't have all of the information. So your property taxes went up about 8% in value. So the county valued your property taxes about 8% higher on the average than the year before. And then we had added 2.5% on top of that. So mine went up exactly 10.5% when I got my notice. And there's a breakdown and it shows it on the bottom, but we're not going to do, well, we have three options and we're gonna talk about them, but this is our least favorite option and we really do not want to raise property taxes. So we're trying to not do the 2.5% increase, which would mean your, your taxes will be significantly lower, well, 2.5% than what is on your notice that you got in the mail. Um, and so we actually didn't have to have this meeting, as the mayor said, but we wanted to because we wanted to bring it up to you. So the very first option on option A is the 10% increase, which is, um, you know, it's the 2.5 plus whatever the county added on. So we're not. Yeah, it's this one. Mine's not color, but it has red on the top. We're not, uh, in favor of that. This is our least favorable one. Obviously, we want to hear your opinions, but without raising property taxes, the first year we would take out, I think it was $650,000 out of savings to pay for the roads project because the first year was very aggressive. The first year, we have several that we're doing, um, well, it, it was on that other list. We, we have several that we're doing resurfacing and then we're doing a few roads that we're doing the Mill and Fill, all in this coming fall. So we were going to be short about $650,000 that was gonna come out of savings.
But to be clear, we have money in savings now.
We have the money.
That we have not spent in prior years because we've been, not been able to get the roads done with contractors not willing to come up to our city and do it. So we've just been saving that money up for when we could finally get to it. And now we have the contractor lined up, the plan ready to go and the money in savings where we can put a big chunk of money towards what we plan to do this fall.
And this road plan, they had, they had professionals come out and they actually had drones and everything and they graded the roads, each section of the road, what kind of condition it was in and exactly what it needed. And that's where that plan came from. So, um, we're following their recommendations of how to preserve, that we want to preserve the roads that are good first and then work on the roads that need a little bit more work after. But we want to get as many roads preserved as we can so that we save money down the road, so that we're not spending more money in the future to fix them. Okay, so option B, do you want to talk about option B? Are you good? So option B, um, we would not raise your taxes and, um, we would get an additional bond for what we need for the roads. Yeah, um, I don't, I don't love getting more money. Another option that we looked at was actually doing the road plan over seven years and I think option B is still doing seven years, right?
Right.
Because even with option B, um, if you look, if you get over to 2029, 2030, 2031, we would have to increase your taxes 3% above whatever the county is recommending, just to be able to pay for the roads. Now, the roads are the number one infrastructure that citizens want done and complain about. It's the message I get all the time from people. I live on Maple. My road is terrible. When are you guys gonna fix it for us? Um, and it's just something that we haven't been able to do, like Aaron said, and we need to get done. So if we look, I can read it from here. So option B is a revamped budget that shows getting an additional bond to help add supplemental cash, helping to complete our project within 12 to 18 months. So it'd be faster, but this would add another loan payment of about $260,000 a year. But we would not have to raise a certified tax rate. But then in 2029, 2030, again, we would have to increase it.
So are you anticipating with these numbers in the future, the sales tax and the number of new homes will be static or what percent increase?
Well, you know, more houses doesn't, it, we have more costs. You have more houses, you have more costs. It's not a lot more revenue?
The roads, I'm sorry.
No.
I mean, we're talking about the roads.
Right, but there's additional services that, with new houses that we have to pay for.
Nice, okay, I've done it three times.
I know.
Is, is there any way we can see the numbers?
So one of the key things to understand about the truth in taxation hearing that we're all there is this is when everybody's coming and asking questions about decisions that have been made over the last six months. All of these numbers have been actively discussed in all the council meetings for the past six months and all the decisions have been essentially made. And now people are coming to ask questions about things that have already been decided. And I'm, I'm not criticizing the citizens.
What's the use of this meeting then?
So this is to say, we have to get these citizens, uh, once they receive their property tax notices, because I did the same thing. I went, went, whoa, 10.6%?
I got a tax from him.
I went, what's that? And that was the, the county saying, this is the official number on how it's going to affect your property taxes. What the budget coming along was decided in all the previous council meetings, but this is how it's going to finally affect your tax rate. So that's what we as citizens get to participate in. But if you want to see the process of why we're deciding what we're deciding, it's something that needs to be participated and watched during the previous process. I remember a couple of years ago when I went to the, um, Nebo's School District meeting because their numbers went up significantly. Remember, as you look at your property tax notices, I'm looking here at mine, 75% of my property taxes are going to the Nebo School District, right? And what's, what we're talking about now is right now, as I look at my notice here, last year I paid 1,700 bucks to Woodland Hills City and this year, without any increase in taxes, which is what we're planning on doing, my property taxes are still going up by 100 bucks just because the increase in value of my property, not because of any property tat, or not any tax rate increase, but just because of the valuation of the county.
Trouble in the back.
Janet, I'd like to comment on, on, this is David Stone, by the way. Um, so, so Tom, um, just real quick, by the way, this is just one little snippet of just something from my perspective of when you have new homes and new roads, there is additional cost because there's plows, there's the wear bars that go, there's the maintenance. All I'm saying is there's just, there is some incremental expenses as you add infrastructure, if that helps in any way. I'm glad, once again, it's just one little.
How much revenue each year increase do we get with the new homes in terms of taxation?
So, sorry, the mayor tried to explain that, but this is a hard concept to understand.
Did you say your name?
Yeah, and, and I, 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 I do have to ask, because we do have a lot of people online. We're gonna have to make sure that we exercise kind of the, the formalities of the meeting. I, I mean, I wanted to have it as conversational as possible, but it'll, we'll go off the rails quickly if we, if we don't. So maybe hold your questions until after the presentation and then you can make the, uh, or you can ask whatever you want and then we can address them individually. Is that fair?
No.
Okay.
Hey.
No?
No.
No, because the, because the questions come up as she's, as it's being discussed.
You're fine.
So when you, when you lay out an avalanche of information that some of us don't absorb as well.
So the revenue is a, is a moving target because it depends on what the county assesses the values at. It depends on if people pay their property taxes on time. Every year we have several that don't pay, they don't pay their taxes in the year in Woodland Hills. We have several that don't pay their property taxes on time and we're getting a little bit of money trickling in from the years before. So just to say, I want to know an exact number, it's a moving target. I think that's a hard, hard number to come up with. Dave, do you want to comment? Go ahead and do your comment.
So the, the most, let me, let me start this way. I read about, three weeks ago, a comment that was on Facebook and someone was basically making the comment that we needed a Prop 13 style thing that California has. So let me explain how California did it and then I'll explain how Utah's different. So the way that California worked is if you had a $100,000 home, and I know none of us have that, and then the next year you had a $150,000 home because the value went up, your property taxes automatically increased by that $50,000 number based on the percentage that they were assessing to your home. That's the way California did it and that's why Prop 13 was so, um, needed because property values were just increasing, increasing, increases and property taxes were increasing, increasing, increasing. Utah does not do it that way. So what the mayor said was absolutely true. Basically, the city says, county, we need, and I'm just gonna use crazy numbers here, we need $1.5 million to run our city. So they take all the value of our homes and then they divide it by that 1.5 million and that gives us the certified tax rate. So it's a hard dollar number. Now, the mayor's also mentioned that it does creep up a little bit and yeah, but we're talking like a thousand to $10,000, we're not talking millions. So it's very little money that gets increased. So now the next year, your home is increased in value.
Hey, thank you.
And let's, again, use a crazy scenario, no new homes have been built. And then we'll use the many homes have been built. So if no new homes have been built, the city still needs $1.5 million, but all of our homes have increased in value, what happens to our taxes?
They go up.
Actually, in Utah, they don't unless the city holds this meeting. They basically stay the same. They might adjust a little bit because my home might go down in value and yours might go up, but they do the exact same thing. They say $1.5 million divided by the value of all the homes, that's the certified tax rate. That's the way it works.
Mine went down last year.
So it, now, let's use the scenario of 15 homes being built. So when 15 homes get built, it's a little more complex, but not too bad. What happens when 15 new homes get built is the city does get a slight bump in our revenue. So even though the city only asked for 1.5 million, we might end up with 1, uh, 1.7 based on the new homes. But then what happens is those new homes get thrown into the pool and you take the pool of homes, divide it by the 1.7 million and that gives you your certified tax rate.
Can I just say, let me, let me just say that the purpose of this meeting is really only, and I, I, I don't want to correct Aaron, but there, there is, like, this is a dynamic situation. If, if, if the residents don't want, I mean, we're not proposing a tax increase and, and at least.
We're saying we don't want to do that.
There's one option that has a tax increase. So I, I, it's a different conversation to want to know specifically how the money is spent and that is a great question. It's something that will require us to provide that information to you in a more comprehensive way and probably not particularly well-suited for tonight's meeting. Tonight's meeting also is really just specific, uh, is specifically to determine if a tax rate increase over that certified rate is wanted. And the council, I mean, it hasn't voted on it yet, but the appetite seems to be that we are not recommending any sort of a tax increase. We're just trying to give you the highlights as to, we can have new roads with or without a tax increase, but there are a few different options to get there. And so that's, that's really what I would hope that we take away from this meeting. And as far as the intricacies of how the money is spent, those are great questions and absolutely you are entitled to that information.
You can ask them and Jody.
Give that information. They have to adopt a budget before September 1st. So the mayor will announce at the end of this meeting that there will be a public hearing on a proposed 2026 fiscal year budget on August 26. We will have that budget available for you. You can request it. You'll also find it online on the agenda. So you'll be able to see it and any questions you have about it, please, please feel free to ask any of the council or you can send those questions to our financial director and he can answer them.
Yeah, and then I, I'll say again, that right now, I, I, I don't expect, I don't want to straw pull the council right now, but I don't expect that anybody is going to recommend anything above the certified rate that we were given by.
We represent you guys and the reason we're here presenting option A, B and C is because we, and, and we're getting way sidetracked, but we're trying to find out which option the citizens feel the most comfortable with. And so I want to just do option C real quick. Option C, um, would be way less by way of property taxes from the residents. No increase to certified tax rate in the next seven years. We would, we have a bond right now, a 2019, um, sales tax revenue bond and we would pull $690,000 out of savings and pay that off. And then we would go and bond the total cost of this road, um, pavement management project and it would be 2.1 million and that would be enough to complete it in 12 to 18 months. And I'm gonna have Tim explain why it's better to do it quickly versus over a seven year cycle. Because Tim did a bunch of research. This is, you want to go ahead and?
Yeah, sure. So everybody probably saw that today the CPI came out and it was two point seven percent. The costs have gone up over the last twelve months, but road construction costs went up thirteen point eight percent. And so as we've looked at this, we think that the best option would be to pay the one bond off, get a new bond, get all the roads done now where we have a known fixed cost and an interest rate and a payment rather than an unknown cost of what the roads will cost three years from now and do all of the work now. Get it all done with a known cost now rather than, than delay it so that we get them all up to spec.
Yeah, Roger Fuller. So if we did that, what, how long would the roads be expected to last? Would you have to go through each road at that point, say like it's got a twenty year lifespan or a fifteen year, a seven year?
Some of them, go ahead.
As long as we maintain the roads with what the engineers specified in the road plan, they'll last forty, fifty years. But we haven't maintained them historically. We haven't done the, the processes on the roads to keep them in the best shape. So this plan gets us all of the roads up to a certain specification and then we can add life to it by keeping them up to date and, and maintained.
And that's a little wrong. So the roads won't last that long, but they'll need different treatments. So we've got sealing, which will last us about seven years on average. Then we've got mill and fill that can last, and then you do sealants on top of that. And then some of our roads need to be completely redone. And at most, we're probably gonna see fifteen to twenty years before we have to redo them again. But what this plan has kind of set out is basically broken it up into four sections. We did a bunch of roads with the water projects and we got some more coming up. And then we'll be able to do a, a different, you know, one quarter of the city with sealants that's, that need their sealants, one quarter of the city with mill and fill, one quarter of the city with, with, with the, the full replacement and stagger those years over time. So really what this has set up, it sets it up with a great plan so that we can do smaller chunks over time and, and be able to replace the roads and do the treatments on the roads that are needed. Because they'll only last about fifteen to twenty years on average before they have to be replaced. And that's with our, with the, the current technology.
And, and let me just also add, Roger, to your point, I, 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 this is a plan. So now what we have is we have a pavement management plan. So it takes into account, okay, we get the roads to the needed specifications. And then from there, we start this cyclical thing of maintaining them and squeezing the maximum life. And that will, eventually, yeah, roads will need to be replaced, but in talking to our public works director, even that, I mean, it's not like going down to road base necessarily. I mean, like, these are, these are remedies that are short of, because like actually demoing and rebuilding a road from the bottom up is very, very expensive. And so the way I see it, we don't envision doing that, but there are ways that through this pavement management plan where we take these steps that will get us to fully, well, not qualified, up to spec roads within a relatively short timeframe. And then by getting them in a rotation for maintenance, then we will be able to maximize the longevity of the road and actually keep them going by continually applying those rebuilding practices that are short of complete demo rebuild. David?
First off, thank you for having this meeting. I realized yesterday, you don't have to. Thank you for doing that. It's never fun to stand up and, and explain yourself in front of everybody. So thank you very much for doing that.
It's my last one, so.
Also, thank you for putting together a plan. Now, let me give you a little bit of background. So I've been here thirty some odd years. Back, this was back before Oak Drive extended from Woodland Hills Drive down to where the drops off the curve. There was nothing there. It was just a bunch of, a bunch of scrub oak. So you talk about replacing the road base, there was no road base. All they did is they scraped the, the, the weeds off the top and dumped it directly on top of there. Okay? So then there's, there's a reason I'm bringing this up. So currently my job as an engineer, I work with the federal government. All I do is, is government contracts for the DOD and the military. So my, my main concern is not the plan, is not the, is not the preparation, not all that stuff. That's all great. My concern is, is holding people accountable, even if you have a professional company coming and doing it. Well, good grief, when we put in the, in the fiber optic, we had a lot of problems with the, with the fit and finish of the road after that. Same thing was going on right now. We've got a bunch of holes there with inverted traffic cones stuffed in these holes, but I don't think you're gonna get filled before, before the snow flies as you drive around the road. You go, you see all sorts of problems with the construction going on, on Valley View Drive, or in that place that had a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of, uh, Planning Commission had to give a lot of deferrals from this, the spec, speaking of specs, because they're afraid of getting sued. We didn't want to get sued and so we said, yeah, go ahead, do what you want. And that's gonna have a really negative effect on the people who are on Oak Drive there with their nice homes by building on a too steep area. Point is, is right there, that road, that's completely beat up. You've got them unloading heavy equipment on that road and you've got massive damage there. Okay? So my point is not the plans. Plan's great. The funding's great. I mean, everything, I appreciate what you're talking about. We don't currently have any way to hold people or companies accountable. I want to hear a plan for how we're gonna hold people accountable for the work that they're paid to do, but may not get quite to the point where they actually do a good job.
Well, I would say that there are ways to hold them accountable and that would be contractually. If they breach their contract, then there are legal remedies that can be pursued.
To your point, Mayor, I don't recall seeing, seeing those companies come back and fix the roads, areas where they had problems after they installed the, you, you know what I'm saying? I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't speak to what has happened in the past. I don't see what we're looking forward to doing.
Two or three years goes on, you know, for the, for the fiber optic.
Oh, yeah, it was more than two or three years ago.
It was five or six.
Yeah, when you've been here thirty some odd years, everything blends together.
Right. Well, I've only been mayor four years, so I'm only taking responsibility for what has been done in the last four years.
My question is really quick. This is Jessica Orm again. So I love what Ted said and his perspective on CPI going up two point seven percent and then the road construction going up thirteen point eight. I just think everyone's familiar with, you know, property values going up and down on a line curve. How this like three point eight that it's gone up just this past year and you want to do the fixed rate, pay these loans off now and have this set rate? How likely is it gonna go up or what if in two years they drop? And then we actually are paying more than we would have if we hadn't. So what is the history of that? Is, can that be made available to us?
We can refinance them.
I, I don't know if we have that chart that I provided available. If anybody has that, they can.
We're not stuck in a higher rate. We can refinance.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you're talking about the cost though, right?
Yeah, so I think she was saying, what if the costs come down rather than cost of construction?
Oh, for construction costs come down?
Yeah.
Or interest rates?
All right, so let's, let's keep these to singular comments. Jody, did you?
We just need to keep the comments and, and I know everyone wants to say something, but we need to, this mic is really sensitive.
Yeah.
And we'll start buzzing. So thank you.
So I, I, let me just, to that point, I mean, none of us has a crystal ball, but Brian Hutchings, who is in that industry, I mean, he has, it's more anecdotal evidence, but he has seen trends. And then Tim also did put together a table showing trends. I don't know if we have it readily available, Jody, but it is something where the writing on the wall, I mean, we could get it wrong. There is a possibility that we get it wrong, but I mean, we could get it wrong in any scenario. But the likelihood of that happening is.
I love Janet's answer, refinancing. That's the perfect solution to it if it does. Thank you.
And we did that with one of our other loans that we had, and it was several years ago, but when rates went down, we, we refinanced it and got it at a.
It's part of, half of the coin, right?
What?
That only take, that only addresses half the coin. The other one is a gamble, right? Expecting construction costs to go up, you know, ten, fifteen percent a year, it makes sense to do it now instead of paying that much later. But if it doesn't, to the lady's point, well, we're host. It's, it's a gamble. We're, we're believing that trend will continue. It's just how it is. So that one, we can do nothing about once we make the decision.
Right. It's just more of an informed decision. We have a, we're trading an unknown of what the construction costs will do for a known fixed interest rate to pay for it using today's costs.
But it is informed by historical data that does suggest that there will be.
The data that I looked at was a twenty year spectrum and construction costs have always exceeded other costs in there, the inflation rate. So over the last twenty years.
Spencer Wells, Spring Drive. So just to sum up basically, so I understand, we've got a contractor that's willing to come up and do this, which is usually ninety percent of the fight for any of us up here. We have a potential fixed rate that we can get.
Yes, we've spoken with the.
And we've got a timeline.
Yes. And I asked the question, because this was a concern of mine. I said, what if we get the loan and then work gets delayed?
Right.
Do we start paying interest? And no, we would wait until the contracts were secure.
That was my question.
And we have everything in place because that was a concern that I had. So we would wait until all the contracts were secure and everything was in line and then we would close the loan.
Okay.
So we can get it approved and it can sit there until we're ready. And then we don't close on it and start accruing interest until it's a go.
So it's very much like a HELOC. You only, you only pay the interest if you use it.
Yeah.
Okay, because just being a resident up here, getting any kind of contractor up here, I get the, I don't want to do that price.
Yeah.
And we end up paying more. And if we've got somebody on the line right now that, that is willing to do it, maybe not contracted, but ready, I think, I, I don't see a problem with what's been proposed.
And, and you know, just.
Except for the increases. I'll say that right now. Nobody wants increases.
Well, and just for perspective, I mean, our roads, we've kicked the can down the road, like literally for so many years, like just even the four years I've been in city council, you know, we can't, we can't really afford, we're just gonna go and do some patchwork on the roads or, or fill the potholes and you get all the people posting on social media about the potholes and giving them names and how they're growing in size. And it's just not great, right? Like, we're still gonna have them because of our weather and, and the conditions that we have up here, but our roads have just been neglected too long and it's just time. It's time to take care of them because something else is gonna come along, you know, in another five years, there's gonna be something else major that we need to take care of. And so we've got to get the roads taken care of while everything else is in good shape.
Just a quick pause, really quickly. Online, there's some requests that we show the camera angle that faces the residents. Can we do that, Jody, so that?
No, I'm, I'm telling her to pick it from her Zoom, Mayor.
It's an individual.
Yeah.
So she can select the view of the audience and it helps with identifying who, because most people have identified themselves, but we're talking a second or third time and not re-identifying themselves. So I just suggested that she watch that so that you can see who it is.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully now you can see who you want to see.
Wayne, say your name.
Wayne Francine. I had a question as we're talking about this one alternative. As I'm looking at this, one of the charts here, am I understanding it correctly? If that alternative is selected, that we are retaining eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, nine hundred forty-five, eight hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars in our savings account. Am I understanding that?
Year one, because we have to pull, we, eventually we'll start pulling a little bit more out of our savings account if we need to and to get strung. We don't want to have a huge savings account. That's a fine balance. We, you know, the council doesn't want a lot of money in there. Again, we just want enough for emergencies. We don't want to have a huge balance. So that's why we would draw down. So for option three, we're actually going to take six hundred and ninety thousand out of savings and pay off that other bond, the two thousand and nineteen sales tax revenue bond. We would just pay that off. So that's where the draw out of savings will come that first year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other?
Daryl Sorensen, I live on Oak Drive. I've, I've been here about thirty years. Worked in the fire department. I was fire chief for several years. And I've seen my property tax go up triple since I've moved here, mainly because property values have gone up. But it's to the point now, I'm eighty years old. I don't have a lot of retirement income. It's got to the point where I'm probably gonna have to sell out. I can't afford to live here anymore because my taxes are almost four hundred a month.
I know. I, I've been here twelve years, which isn't nearly as long, but when I bought my home, it was worth four thirty-five. And my property taxes were pretty low and now it's worth nine something and my, my taxes have more than doubled. And that has nothing to do with the city, unfortunately. That is just the state and the county and the way they tax.
Like Dave talking about Prop thirteen, it'd be nice if they get past them, kind of a law like that to where you can afford to live in a place till you die, you know?
Yeah.
Ernie Jolly, Valley View Way. I'm a simple person and Ben helped me with this question, but I have a good memory just in the last room. When you get your water bill or whatever, on there, there's that seventy-eight dollar maintenance fee. Where on earth does that go? Ben, help me out.
That is a great question. So today, just for your guys' understanding, we have talked about the general fund. Per state statute, water has to be an enterprise fund. So it is separate and water has to pay for water. So it is in an entirely different budget than what we are discussing today.
This is a general fund.
So this is the general fund and as you look at the pie graphs, it shows where those wa, and you'll notice water is not on any of those charts. It is because it is in an entirely different budget, which is not affected at all by property taxes or anything of that nature.
That seventy-eight dollars that comes right off the top before you pay a dime for your water.
So to also answer that question there, that seventy-eight dollars is going to pay off the bond because we had to add that when we did the first water line project.
Is one.
So you can see here on your maps, right, all of this kind of green area, not all of it, but a lot of it, where we are going to be doing the micro sealing, all those newer roads in the city is where we had to rip out all the old water main because they were breaking all the time. The council at that time, that predates the mayor and Janet and I, had to make that hard decision because we were having so many water main breaks. And so that's maintenance fee was part of the requirement from the state's water department to be able to give us the zero percent interest loan that funded all of that.
They actually required us to raise the rate.
Yeah, so water has to pay for water and thus that goes into the enterprise fund.
Seventy-eight dollars water longer instead of maintenance.
That's a great question. I guess we could re-tag it, but I think it also, there's a couple other elements in that calculation. But predominantly it goes to paying off that bond.
Once that bond's paid off, will it go back down then? Good luck.
As long as we don't have another one.
How long have you lived here? Thirty years. You'll probably have it seventy-eight dollars.
Already need another tank, so.
So Keller Clark, I live on Oak. I'm just trying to understand because the mayor mentioned that there was some money that went to help fix a well and then they showed pictures of that, but that was identified as coming out of the general fund, I thought. Did I?
I, I didn't mean to give that impression. That was, that was out of, that was just public works, state of the city kind of stuff.
And we do, we do budget every year for maintenance and stuff for things like that that come up and they almost always do. So we end up using it, but we did have some money budgeted and then it, but it did come out of water.
Yeah, Roger Fuller, how much is still left on that debt?
Which one?
The one for the, the water budget, the FIS one.
There's a breakdown in the packet, I believe, of all the debt. Well, except it wouldn't be for the water. I'm not sure. Is Chris still on there? I don't see him. He has.
Yeah, he's there.
It's a fairly new bond.
I'm still here.
Because I looked at that, I looked at the budget here, what, about a month ago and we were kind of talking about this and nowhere to be found where any of the debt mentions any of the debt. So it's just very interesting seeing how much debt. We have about seven hundred thousand, it sounds like.
It shows the debt service. It just doesn't show the balance.
Yeah, if you go to the, the yearly audit, it's, it's there on the auditor's website. There's three, there's three outstanding loans and, and the pages of the audited details payments due for the next several years. Some of those loans are still, we still have twenty-five plus years on them.
And, and I will say also that water, unlike roads, like roads, you don't want to finance for more than, I think, ten years is what our public works director recommended, but water has a much longer, I mean, you don't want to be financing infrastructure where your debt outlives your infrastructure, but with water, it has a much longer life. So it can have a longer.
So go look at the state then, is basically.
I don't know. Chris, can you ballpark it? I, I don't have the number with me.
Yeah, there's, there's three loans. I can look it up, but it'd take me a minute or two to get that, but I could send it to Jody. She afforded on.
Yeah, why don't you just find it and then we can have it here tonight if you can find it relatively.
Yep, I can do that. I can do that.
Steve Johns, Oak Drive, what, what is the twenty nineteen water bond, is that the water bond originally? That's what Chris is about to look up and do we know when it's, when it's due, when it expires? So that's.
He's gonna look.
Okay, so.
Hey. Um, in the back.
I'm Jessica Ormackin, is there something that we as homeowners can do in our eavesmiss? Or anything that will help protect our roads? Like, is there any responsibility that we can own, that we can do?
I wish Ted was here, that'd be a great thing, I know at one time, maybe you can answer, Wayne, as far as keeping your, your culverts and your. Cleaned out and keeping, you know, kind of digging that out so the water can flow because then it's not getting under the roads, that's a big thing, is if you're not. If you're not keeping your water flowing beside the road, it's gonna get under the road and eat away at it, do you want to respond, Wayne?
I'm Wayne Fransen, I would just say that. There is concern that the city has and addresses that in our runoff and our. Water studies that we do to make sure that water is being adequately moved to where it needs to go in the city. When the developer comes in and constructs. The ditch works and so forth in their subdivision. We always work with them to make sure that the water is running off appropriately and not undermining or eroding. The road or other facilities there that would have to soon be repaired, so we do give attention to that.
Yeah.
John Herod Oak Drive, when I did my little subdivision, I had to do a lot of road work. Then someone came in and disturbed it all on West Oak and messed up everything, so. It doesn't look anything like what I paid to them, it's a big mess now. So I said, why did I have to pay so much money to get it to look nice and drained? Then I guess it was the city came in and messed the whole thing up and.
What was it messed up for, was it for the fiber or?
I don't know, no, it was drained, it was messed up before the people just came in. But when they worked on West Oak, all the wood brass that I had laid down was essentially destroyed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, yeah, that was way before my time and I don't know why that happened, but.
But I think that we've got safeguards in place now that that shouldn't happen again, I mean, as a city, we are, I mean. There are sins of the fathers that we absolutely acknowledge, but, I mean, you know, we do what we can to try to steer away from that, but. I, I can't emphasize enough that our direction now, I mean, we're not, we're not just kind of piecing things together, we're. We're trying to run like a professional organization and I think that will make a difference.
Because we are growing, like you guys have mentioned, we are growing and we have to handle the city in a manner such that we have certain quality.
Tom Brighton again from Oak Drive, still on Oak Drive. So as I understand, so I understand that if we have budgetary questions, we should defer those to a meeting on August twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that would be a great, and if you want in advance of that to get information, the specific questions about, that's available to you.
We shall return.
Okay.
Another great option there is reach out to us as council members, because as we're making our decisions. It's a little trickier for us when we get, you know, input from you guys, which we want. Like the night as we're making the decisions, because we've already spent, you know, hours and hours dissecting and going through all the numbers. So feel free to give us a call, our numbers are all on the website. And let us, ask us your questions, give us your thoughts, your opinions, because that just makes us better informed, so we, we appreciate those types of conversations. Thank you.
And just, just real quick and then we'll get Sherry back there, because she's been patiently waiting, but we work on the budget almost every council meeting. And then we also have a finance committee that we have CPAs and very qualified people on there that are giving advice, so whenever there's a big project like this. We take it before the finance committee and they review it and we talk about it, we have Chris on there, we pick it apart, don't we? We ask him, ask him a lot of questions and a lot of options and we ask why. And so there is a lot of work that goes into it and the budget, we have, we, as soon as this one's done, we'll start talking about the next one. Because we're always planning and we're trying to figure out the best scenario, Sherry.
Guess mine are more suggestions. The fellow up here that talked about what policies does the city have in place to make sure that. You know, the fiber's going in right or whatever project it is that we're working on. We got grants years ago for the mitigation process. Deep Forest Circle was a beautiful road, so was Eagles Nest. But the weight of those trucks carrying all that dirt up to the water tanks ruined our roads. Things like this, can we charge impact fees to developers specifically for the roads? When they come in to build, they've got heavy trucks and they're ruining our roads, look at Summit Creek Drive. The other thing is, I've looked on the state website and the state cannot impose mandatory maintenance fees for cities. But in regards to water and sewer, what the city charges, that's seventy-eight dollars and I think it's ninety-three for me for sewer. Has to be directly related to the cost that the city is expending.
There are a few people that have sewer.
Well, lucky them.
I know, right? But they pay more, and I think Roger was next, because I think he's been trying to raise his hand. You're good? Okay.
I have a question, it might not have a name, it might not have a. Oh, name Rebecca Everett, Spring Drive, East Spring, West Spring Drive. Back when they were redoing that waterline on my road, on West Spring Drive. I had, there was a power surge about a year later that blew out. Many, many outlets and fried two, two. Stoves and microwaves and we had the. City up, they referred us to the. The power company, the power company came up and said. What had happened was that the people putting in the waterline had nicked the main trunk line. And this had happened to twenty-seven houses up here so far. I haven't heard anything about those other twenty-seven people that had that happen, but I wonder. Who is responsible for that, is it the city that hired that water company? Or is it the water company?
The water company, like, we, we're going through this on your side right now with Comcast, and I know this is probably not the best example, but. We are holding their feet to the fire with respect to, I mean, they are, they're nicking things, but.
That's Xfinity, you mean?
Yeah, Comcast Xfinity.
Oh, that's the same.
Yeah, and so, but, but we, we are holding them accountable for damage and so. Again, it's, it's a matter of like what happened then, I, I can't really speak to that, but I do know that. There is a commitment to make sure that there's accountability for these improvements that are installed in this respect.
So where do I go for the accountability, how do I know, I don't know who the water company is.
I, Jody, you have an answer for it?
So back when Bancorp did our water lines, we kept on asking residents to go in if they had a problem, you know, their front.
I didn't see any of those.
And that came through our email and our water bills and we kept on saying, if you have a problem, if you see a problem, if your driveway's damaged. We had twelve months to go ahead and get anything filed and then.
I never saw any of those.
That's.
Yeah, Joelton Demille then came through and went through and we bought every single one of them with the waterline company and made sure some of them were good. Some of them were on Oak, I remember specifically, and they went back and looked through them and.
It's unfortunate.
David, were you on the council at the time? And so we did that, now twelve months later, if you had something that happened.
Yeah, they said that it's a ticking time bomb because they don't know how many of those main trunk lines were nicked. And they will disintegrate all of a sudden sometime in the future. And somebody will have a power surge and blow out all their appliances.
And unfortunately, unless we have someone on site the whole time they're digging, watching them. Which would mean we'd have to pay for an employee to be there the whole time they're doing a project. We might not catch everything, we can't, I mean, you'd really have to have someone assigned.
And maybe you want to talk to Jody privately about that after?
Yeah, we can talk with Ted and.
Chris has those numbers, the water debt numbers, Chris?
There he is.
Okay, we currently, we currently have two water loans right now, one was taken out in two thousand and fourteen. And that was originally from nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that was to redo the booster station and a few other things, excuse me, the well. And a few other little projects up at the top of the hill. The loan was taken out, and I said, two thousand and fourteen, it matures on October third, thirty-third, twenty thirty-four. Our interest rate is two point nine percent on that one with a. On that loan, the second loan we received was in twenty twenty-one, the original amount was two, almost as shy of two point nine million dollars. It will mature on October fifth of twenty fifty-one, the interest rate is zero percent. The state just gave us the money so we could start working on the projects that were desperately needed at that time. So those are the two outstanding loans and the enterprise fund.
Thanks, Chris.
Not the general, but the what?
Right, and I also, I think it's important to note too, that when it comes to financing. Things like roads and water, which are so expensive, I mean, there are some bigger cities that have the money in their pockets, but. Cities of our size, it's, it's very difficult to cash finance that sort of expenditure and so. It's, it's not like we would be an outlier by using debt to build water lines or roads, just because they are so expensive. So, I mean, you know, it might not, it might be cold comfort, but. It, I mean, that's sort of the reality that we live in is that if we were to pay cash to redo a road, by the time we saved enough money to redo that road. The nature of the repair would have fundamentally changed and, and what cash we had saved would not be sufficient to even address that problem.
Is Dave still here, Dave, real fast, West Loafer, when you promised and when we first looked at finishing it, what was the cost?
Oh goodness, West Loafer, it was, it was like seven hundred thousand.
I'm gonna move this into. The studio, so let's just.
You can mute.
Dennis, are you addressing the meeting? Some attention.
And then what, and then what was our final cost, do you remember? You were.
I wasn't part of the council.
Then what was our final cost?
Good job, though.
Yeah, that, that's, well, Chris, you might have those numbers.
But it was, it was more than double, right?
Yeah, it was, I think, Dave, when we really officially looked at it, it was like a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars and then it came in just shy of three hundred and seventy-ish thousand dollars by the time we did it.
Because there was a delay, we were trying to save up for it, we didn't have the funds and it ended up costing the city a lot more money.
And so again, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say Steve Johns, Oak Drive, so I was just gonna ask Chris, so the twenty nineteen bond, we didn't talk about that one. What's the, what's the date on that one and we're right around, what, six hundred and ninety thousand that?
The twenty nineteen bond is, is the general fund, not the water fund, and we've got several notes and leases through the general fund.
And that's primarily for the city center, correct, Chris, right, that's the twenty nineteen bond?
Yeah, which is correct. And, and Woodland Hills Drive and a few park repairs. That was that loan, we, that was actually taken out in twenty thirteen and we refinanced in twenty nineteen at a lower rate.
What was the maturity on that, is there a maturity?
Yeah, I've got those sheets here.
Twenty thirty-three, thirty-three, okay.
Yeah, so we have three loans outstanding right now in the general account, one, this one that you're talking about, Steve, for the. Twenty nineteen, what we call sales and franchise tax revenue bond, that's what's securing the note. And that went to refinance a boat loan that was taken out twenty thirteen for the city center, Woodland Hills Drive, parks and a few other minor things. We have another one that was taken out of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars called a Class C road bond, which a chunk of that went to pay what Dave Pratt was just talking about, the Loafer. Drive expansion there, and then the third one we have is for the twenty twenty-four bond for the new fire truck, that fire truck secures itself with its own asset. And then we've got five leases for snowplowing, snowplow trucks, tractor, service truck and fire chief's truck.
And we do leases on those so that we can rotate them and keep the equipment working well and we also have maintenance contracts when we lease them. So we don't have to pay every time they break down, because we have, they're under contract and they can get repaired if we need something. So that's why we do the leases on those.
All right, well, so do we, thanks Janet and thanks Tim and thanks Erin when we ended up, but.
Erin had to run, sorry.
Well, we appreciate the presentation there, I want to give each council member an opportunity to. Say a few words if you've got something to say to add to the conversation and then we'll turn it back over to. You as the residents, if there's any final commentary or questions that you have, then you're gonna jump ahead in line, huh? Can you wait till after the council or is it just a?
It's a short question.
A gnawing question that, okay.
It's a gnawing question.
All right, well, let's hear it.
Robin Hanson, Oak Drive, if we have any questions to the budget that is, that was approved in June and whatnot and. Want to understand certain line items and things like that. What's the process for trying to get to understand that better in detail and, and possibly, you know, it sort of influence?
Right, so first of all, it's a tentative budget, the formal budget will be adopted late August, so it's not, it's not the actual budget. But, I mean, so we try to be available to answer if you have specific questions and. I mean, Chris is gonna be the one that has his finger on the pulse of the minutia in terms of different expenditures, but. I mean, I would say that any of us could be contacted.
Anything that cannot be disclosed or the city does not want it disclosed, or is it a hundred percent transparency?
The only thing would be legal, I mean, if there's like.
I'm not after that.
Yeah, I mean, so there's attorney-client privilege type things, or if there's like land purchases and there's pricing, you know, some of those things we do have to. Keep under our hats at least during negotiations, but everything else, it's, it's your money, so you're, it's.
You can reach out to any of us and if we don't have the answer, we'll reach out to Chris for you, because we have the direct line to Chris and we'll get the answer and we'll get back to you.
Ben to take a minute and explain that screen over there.
Okay, Ben, let's start with you.
Perfect, so what I want to just kind of reiterate after we've gone through all of those different conversation points. Tonight, our primary focus and need is. What?
A, B, or C.
A, B, or C, well, it actually is even less than that, we're not deciding on A, B, or C, we are deciding on if we're going to go with the proposed ten percent. Increase or any amount less or zero, so really what we're looking to figure out tonight. Is, are we going to raise taxes, and as the mayor has, you know, kind of showed our hand. We don't really have an appetite to raise taxes. So we are looking to that now, if we come to a conclusion as we go through our work session a little bit. We are going and we decide, hey, we want to figure out a few other things, we want to. We don't even actually have to decide on the tax rate today, but we will have to tell you when we will be finalizing that tax rate. I have a feeling we will decide tonight, though, but I don't want to speak for all of my, my colleagues here. In short, again, option A is a four-year plan. Okay, we're pulling from our savings, the savings account will end at that four-year plan at one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in the savings account. Currently it has about one point three, one point four, I believe. Option B is the seven-year plan extended with three years of a smaller increase potentially in fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty and twenty thirty-one. And that will also potent, will, will require us pulling a bond to make that all work and we'll be pulling heavily from that savings account. And that will end with a balance in the savings account of ninety-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-one thousand.
Which is below our comfort level.
Correct, and option C is us pulling a bond now and trying to get the whole thing done as quickly as possible. Pulling money to pay off the twenty nineteen bond. um, for around one point six million or so, depending on rates and all that fun stuff there. Uh, that will then leave our final, at the end of seven years, our our accounts at around four hundred and sixty-one thousand, which is quite a bit higher than what we were actually anticipating. We'd like to be around two hundred and fifty thousand.
But the target with option C is zero tax raise for seven years. Now, that's, that's delightful. I'd like to see that happen. So that.
And that's.
One of our choices.
But we're not fortune tellers. We can't tell what's gonna happen in the future in our city.
Well, and future administrations may change this plan, right? But this is what we're looking to do, is try and create a means by which we as a city council are able to meet the needs of the city in the most fiscally responsible way possible. So my favorite part of today's meeting has been the questions and the knowledge of knowing that you guys can call us, ask us, email us, you know? Honestly, calling is the best way. Um, if you call me at any time, if I don't have your name and number saved, there's a possibility I might not answer, but leave a voicemail and I'll call you back instantly for the most part. Um, but really what we're looking to do here is to provide you guys with this information and for us to hear your guys' insight and input, which we appreciate. I know oftentimes it sounds like we, we may not listen because we've done a lot of work in other council meetings or through our own personal research and come to certain conclusions. Um, but there are certain times that I have been sitting in these meetings and have heard from somebody and they've given me more information and I've changed my mind. So your guys' input and you guys being here is is extremely helpful, so thank you so very much for being here.
Thanks, Ben, Doral.
Um, I've done this twelve times, gone through this tax time with the council. And every time has been a challenge over some issues. And and this year, it has been really different. I'll just be honest with you. It's what I see happening in our city as we're involving professionals. This finance committee has been huge in helping us figure out the best way to use your money, or at least to help us make those decisions. So I appreciate the fact that we've started reaching out to 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 people like that, people that know pavement. People came in and presented many things to us about how to get your roads where it doesn't, it costs thousands instead of hundreds of thousands to do a road. We listened to all of those professionals and I think the plan that you're seeing, any of these three plans, the plans that you're seeing are, they've had, they've taken a lot of effort to get to. And I feel like um the employees that we have, the 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 professionals we have have really helped in getting us where we are. And I'm confident that that everything that could be done has been done in getting to this, this tax decision. I think that's it, Mayor.
All right.
It's a challenge.
Thank you, Doral. Janet?
You guys already heard from me, but I was just more uh, for the finance committee. But personally, um, I'm one of the ones that wanted to make sure we didn't drain our savings account. But I also don't want too much money in there and I do think it's a fine balance um, and figuring out what's gonna be the best way to go. And I really um, don't want to raise property taxes. I'm in an industry that my income's about a third of what it used to be. And so the last few years have been pretty rough. Um, and so the last thing I want to do is raise property taxes. But I also know that if we let our roads fall apart, it's gonna cost us millions and millions and millions of dollars to fix them. So we've got to, we've got to do this pavement management plan and we've got to keep our roads up and we've got to figure out a way to pay for it. And when it was first presented, um, I asked the question, how are we gonna pay for it? Like, year one, we could see that with what we had budgeted and pulling about six hundred and fifty out of savings, we could cover year one. But how did, how did we keep paying for it going forward? And that's where all of this came from. And so I hope you uh, just all know that we're, we've all worked really hard and we've, we've worked Chris out pretty good. We kept saying, we need this scenario and that scenario and what about this and what about that? And we made him redo it so many times. But we're just trying to find the best option. We want to represent you and we want to do what's gonna be best for everybody.
Thank you. All right, Carrie?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight. I'm so sorry that I'm not there in person. I had some extended family difficulties come up that required me to be out of town. But I've appreciated all of the questions that I've heard tonight. I've tried to write every single one down. Um, there are many questions as it comes up on how we operate in a city. There's management, there's operations. It costs money to run a town and we're growing and we have additional needs. As we look at these three options, you know, as we first looked at option A, two point five seemed fair enough as an increase. It wasn't even inflation, just to do a few extra things. And yet, because property values increased, it bumped it to ten percent. Option B then comes into play. And as you see, there were some things that just didn't fit right with us on how long it would take us to get some of the projects done. Um, really, our three main focuses in our city are, are all infrastructure. It's uh, our, well, two-thirds are infrastructure, the roads and the water. And then we have public safety, which um, again, is partly roads and it's, it's a snow plowing, et cetera, that goes into place. As we look to those options and and what we can do and what services we provide, um, as you heard, asphalt is increased nine percent over each year. And then we don't even have that many roads, so to get a contractor to come forward is, has not been easy. This road maintenance plan has really been a godsend to us as a council so that we can visually see um, and concretely plan for the repair of all of our roads. And I think that's why we're um, really looking to option C in terms of a bond uh, to get those done as soon as possible. Now, uh, as we have been able to, as we talked about the, the loans we have now, you know, to get something from the state for little or zero percent interest really is a blessing to a smaller city like ours. As we look to things, we talked about the differences between paying for water and paying for this general fund. Um, there was a question earlier about water rights and the surplus water that we get and why can't we sell that? You know, water is owned by the state of Utah. And we're a political subdivision and we are given authorization by the state engineer to use a certain amount of water. Everyone who builds a house in Woodland Hills is required to bring water rights with them that they sign over to the city. And based on those numbers, the water engineer for the state, the state engineer allocates a certain percentage. We can pump water up to that level. And then we have to stop. So we do have water that is adequate for our needs and for our water rights. We will need um, additional storage in the future, as the mayor said. Um, also by state statute, we have to have a certain amount of water available at all times for fire suppression. So those are things that we've put into place. Our public works projects completed professionally does take a little more um uh, fu- funding than maybe we have been used to in the past. But we want to make sure that the money that is spent is being uh, spent effectively and wisely. Um, and we feel like having those professional services will give us an increased um, life of the road system overall. Um, the phases that we have put in place, I think, are important for you to note, um, to see that we aren't going to um just do it haphazardly, but that there is a reason for each one in that, in their respective phases is important. And then holding those people accountable for the work that is done. I know sometimes, especially right, like now, when there's an outside contractor coming in and they have every right to use our utility easements to do their work. They sometimes disrupt that and we want them to put it back better than they had it. But their contract says they have to restore it to what it was. Um, that may be subjective for us, but hopefully our, and we really feel like our, our public works director is holding them accountable for um, the work that is done. Um, our debt, we are not allowed to have debt that is um, more than we can handle. That is also by state statutes. So as our finance director works with financial institutions, this is here, those bonds, those loans for us for these projects, that is also being considered. We can't just keep spending, spending, spending. But we act, can look, as was said previously, um, to make sure that the money that we do get is spent wisely. With a zero percent loan, that is, makes more sense than trying to save up for a project, not knowing the cost in the future. At least this way, we know how much it's gonna cost to repay those debts. And then overall, uh, as was said by everyone else, we never intend to just arbitrarily raise property tax. That's not the intention of us. We want to make sure that our services are adequately paid for and that there are services that you want us to, to include in our budget. Um, so we're trying to be mindful and and in going forward. So my um, my thought is on this is listening to you, listening to the council as we have discussed the budget. Janet was right, we had discussed the budget every single council meeting in one form or another. And we're very mindful of that this is not only your property taxes, this is our property taxes as well. And we love our city. We all have lived in Woodland Hills because the quality of life is something that we not ju, we don't only just enjoy, we, we thrive to live on our mountain. And we love our wildlife and we love our trees and we love our neighbors. And yet, there are costs associated that, with that, that might be a little higher than others um, just for the nature of where we are. And so I wanted to thank you again for coming, for voicing your opinion. And as Ben said, feel free to call. Um, call, text, whatever you want to, to me and I'll answer as many questions as I can. And if not, we can always find out the questions that are there. Um, I think we have an amazing city and this is always a hard time of the year as we discuss what our needs are and what our income possibly could be. Um, we don't even know what our tax rate is until the end of June and we have to make a decision. And so it can make it really difficult to, to wait, wait, wait and then find out whether we even have enough. And so I appreciate you coming and um, letting us have an opportunity to hear from you before we have to make our final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie and Brian, bring us home.
All right, I'll try to make mine a- as short as possible, folks. I appreciate you being there, really look forward to hearing from you. Um, my phone number is posted, uh, just like everybody else's, we all have our emails and we really do want to hear from you. I will be honest and say that I was one of the ones uh, that pushed the hardest for the proposed two point five percent tax increase. What I didn't want to do was have a twelve percent one come down the road. I wanted to s- see if we were gonna need to, to, to do it a little bit at a time. Um, when the numbers came out from the county, uh, it really kind of put most of us in shock, except for Chris had warned us it was going to be that way and he, he was really, really close. Um, but after that, some serious work has gone in by the, the employees of the city to put these, these options together. We've asked for a lot, we've asked the finance committee for a lot. Um, and I think we've, the, the city employees, the staff there has put us a fantastic uh, option together where we can still keep that savings, some of the savings, because we don't need to have that much. And and I don't, like we said, we're not, we're not uh, crystal ball readers, so we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. But as we, as we uh, look at, at what we need to spend, we're gonna do the best that we can and and try to avoid raising taxes at all. Um, and and get us to a more manageable level and actually manage things better. Um, please give a call, um, if you have questions. I'm, I'm here for you and and I appreciate you being there.
Thank you. Okay, any final thoughts, uh, Wayne?
I'm not playing, Francis. Let me say something just a little bit to connect the dots. And I'm not sure you've spent enough about this. The city, we spent a lot of time on this. This is the most expensive item i- in the budget. And um, but in the end of June, the city passed a tentative budget for the coming year. And I want to stress tentative because it, it's kind of a guidepost to where we go from here before we get a final budget that the council will approve. We have the budget figures, we have all the salaries of the, of, of employees, the the office supplies, the administrative supplies. That's all put together and available for you all to look at beyond what has been presented to you here tonight. All the revenue sources that the city has, we've talked primarily about property taxes, but there's other sources of revenue that the city has generally coming through the state. Sell pieces of sales taxes, et cetera. All that is broken down for you to all see and look at. And those items then will be reviewed in total uh, in uh, an upcoming city council meeting where the final budget will be approved by the council. But I, I just wanted to connect some of those dots because I, I know there's been a few questions asked about other items uh, on, on the budget and it, it's complete with, with the account numbers and so forth and the revenue sources and the expenditures that are anticipated to be made. So I just wanted to mention that to you all. And so as was mentioned, it's available to all of you to look at and review. Uh, Jody's kind of the point of contact at the city for, for having that and making it available to those of you who want it.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Ernie? Did you have your hand up? Yeah?
Yeah, Ernie, Jolly, uh, Vali, you, Wayne. Uh, I uh, I'm a Superman. And I understand we all use the roads and we need to maintain the roads. But is there anyone we could talk to? Because I'm, I'm almost as old as Gerald Sorenson. That's pretty old. And uh, how long do you have to pay over half of your property tax to Nebo School District?
This is the Wrong Truth and Taxation hearing, to bring that up.
That's a good lawyer on.
Well, I know I played plenty, or I paid plenty, I got five kids, so.
Who would, who'd we talk to? Do we go grab Mike McHale? Do we grab Cox? Do we grab, who do we?
Uh, for the Nebo School District, so I, I don't actually know the legislation behind how that's carved up. Uh, so I, I wouldn't actually know where to direct you, Chris, you might have an answer.
We would need to go to the state level to redefine how property taxes are allocated and where certain things.
Even whether you have ten kids or no kids, it seems like everybody's paying the same, no matter what your age is, right?
And I know that there are those that find that very distasteful, uh, and and then, you know, some see it differently. Uh, this isn't really, uh, we, I, 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 we could, like Ben said, I mean, I, I think that there probably is a state legislature. All right.
In addition, in addition, Mayor, um, the truth and taxation hearing for Nebo School District, I think, was last week. But it's the school board that holds that, similar to the council holding one for the city. The school, Nebo School Board holds it for the school district overall. The property tax law is a legislative item. At this point, there's no um, there's, doesn't seem to be any um appetite to change the tax system with regards to property tax and where it's paid to. Uh, but, so, but, so what I'm saying is, if you have a problem with, with Nebo, you've got to go to that truth and taxation as well to voice your opinion, just like you're voicing your opinion here. But then also talk to our state legislature. Um, um, Mike McHale is our senator and Jeff Burton is our representative. Um, but those are the, the things to do. Um, Nebo, I that, just heard that Nebo did not have to hold one this year because they didn't raise their rates, they just maintained the bonds they already have. But in paying those bonds, eighty percent of your property tax does go to the school district. eighty percent of your property tax does go to the school district.
Okay, it sounds like Jenna has an inside track.
I have something. Well, um, if you're if you're retired and you're on a fixed income, there is a remedy. Um, the county does have an option for you. Um, you can actually go to the county and based on your age and your income, you can get your dis- you can get your property taxes discounted. So you actually just need to call Utah County Treasurer. You can Google it. Just look up the Utah County Building and call them and ask them what the requirements are. There's a form that you have to fill out. I've already actually helped a couple of our residents do this. And they filled out the form and um, you have to show your income and it has to be below a certain level. So you have to be on a fixed income. You can't be super wealthy and be able to do it. But then you can get your property taxes discounted. So just call Utah County Treasurer and ask them how.
If we can pay ten percent of what our income.
Well, they do discount it quite a bit. It is a pretty good savings for people that are, that are, you know, sixty-five and older. If you're on, if you're on retired and you're on a fixed income, there is a way to get your property taxes reduced.
Okay, any other comments? All right, Sherry.
Two, two questions. Does the state mandate, because the state mandates a lot of things that we have no control over. Do they mandate the amount of money we have to have in our reserve savings account to operate the general fund?
No.
The other question I have is, in this twenty twenty-five tax revenue, where are all the impact fees? I mean, our impact fee for water is four grand, soup's five grand. Uh, there's a couple others in there. I mean, it's a sizable amount of money, even if you round it up to ten. And we have a hundred or fifty permits. Where is that fifty thousand dollars taken into account for five hundred thousand within the revenue?
Right, well, uh, I would have to get Chris's input on where exactly in the budget that is.
It shows it. It shows them an income, but then they go into the fund. Chris can answer it, but then.
And they go out to pay, pay debt is is a chunk of it. There's a, uh, there's an impact fee plan that you can look at. It actually might be on our webpage and it shows the different percentages that the city has to meet as the city is pulled from taxes, excuse me, water rates versus what new residents' impact is. And that's probably how to get that loan or we're saving for the well in the future.
But I, my experience is that impact fees are very closely governed, so it's not like it's being rat-holed somewhere that, uh, you know, just is showing up.
It shows an income. It's a line item.
It's at the bottom on the.
All right, uh, Roger and then Jody.
I have, um, Mayor, I have something to say to Sherry as well. You know, with regards to our reserve fund, although the state doesn't say how much, you know, we need to have, we all, they do say that we cannot have more than twenty-five percent of our budget in reserve. And so we have always maintained closer to, I think, fifteen to seventeen percent maybe. But um, we've never allocated the whole twenty-five percent that we're allowed. So we we do try to be really careful not to hold too much in in reserve, but enough in case that there is an emergency of some sort.
Okay, that's a good point. All right, Roger.
So so uh, I've, every council person basically offered the invite, which was to, you know, we wanted to get as much information we want, uh, wanted on the budget or the actual numbers or anything else we could get that. Yeah, I plan, I plan to do that and I plan actually to do that in a way I'd love to have it in a spreadsheet format. Love to be able to do my analytics and review it and, you know, just kind of go through it myself. So is that available? Is that something I can do?
It's public.
Yeah, I I believe that. Well, Chris would be the one that has, he's the keeper of the book, so he would have that information, but we could certainly coordinate. Yeah. I mean, now as far as reformatting it to your specific purposes, I mean, I, I don't know, that might be something that you'll have to just figure out.
Well, he's saying he wants to take it and do it himself.
Right, no, I know. I'm saying that, uh, if you are looking for us to reformat a first space, it's a purpose. We might not be able to do that, but yeah, as long as you can correct your numbers, then yeah, the information's there.
Just to be clear, the format that we have it in, it's regulated. And Chris can answer to this, but we have to have all those line items and have it broken out like it is. That that's regulated by the state, the software that we use to there's a lot, there's a lot of regular, we're audited all the time and we do really well on our audits on how we keep our books. So, you know.
Yes, correct. And then also just so everybody knows, I think Tom was asking earlier. I have to upload the finances quarterly to the state website, plus the state auditor has copies of all of our budgets. So the questions you're asking and wanting the city to provide is actually already done on transparent.utah.gov. You can get so much information on that website of monthly. You can drill down to what invoice is paid where and who it was to. That that is a great resource, but like I said, every quarter that that is uploaded in detail to there.
Say that website one more time.
Transparent.utah.gov.
And again, to the extent that we can facilitate it, we, I mean, we're happy to. Yeah, just, uh, we should be wrapped up with that about ten o'clock tonight, so just hang back. All right, um, you said your name like four times and I forgot. Gerald, okay.
Do people that own lots that are not, that doesn't have a home on it, they don't pay that water fee, do they?
Half of it.
They pay half of it.
Well, they do. They pay half, huh?
And their property taxes are way higher.
Yeah, they're way higher. Okay.
Because when it's your primary residence, you get a forty-five percent discount.
Right, right.
Plus when it's just a lot. Now, the value isn't as high because there's nothing built on it, but they're paying a hundred percent of the tax on the lot.
Okay, so they do pay for part of the water even though they're not living or have a home on that.
And we actually have been improving our collection of standby fees because it was kind of a larger accounts receivable and and we've Lori Thompson is actually doing really good at getting that money brought in. So, yeah, it's it's there. All right, anything else? Thanks for all the comments. I I hope that you leave, feel like you didn't waste two hours. Uh, we're not quite done yet, but uh, I I I appreciate you coming in and being part of this process.
If you think of anything else, just reach out to us and ask. All of our contact infos are on the, on the city website.
I was wrapping up and, uh, no, go ahead.
Thank you, but I think you can sense lots of us are concerned about taxes and costs.
Yeah, for sure. No, and and.
Manage it very frugally.
What concerns me also is I I get the sense that there is a feeling of distrust too.
There's a lot of misconceptions.
And I mean, I, and that's easy to lose and difficult to gain. I mean, and, you know, that's why we want to be as transparent as we can and and uh, and uh, I mean, as, you know, again, I'm a taxpayer and and I've been behind the curtain for four years and I certainly want to feel a level of comfort with how my money's being spent. And just to end on a rah rah note, I really do like these road plans because when I was first elected, the state of the roads and the public works, it kept me awake at night. It was very concerning to me because it was sort of like we're just sort of flying by the seat of our pants. And so to have something that we actually, I mean, you can see what we're going to be doing in five years, in seven years. I mean, it's it's laid out. Again, subject to all kinds of potentialities, but but we have a plan and I think that's a great place for us to be as a city. And so I hope that that that's at least one takeaway. And uh, so again, thanks.
Our concerns are not with how the money is spent on roads. That's not where the concern lies, or that distrust lies, or or we want transparency. It's how the money is spent internally in the city. On people.
Yeah, are you talking human resources or are you talking?
Among other things.
Okay, well, and I can't stress it out.
Council doesn't get paid anything. You know that, right?
Yeah, you know, I'm the lowest paid mayor in the state.
How many, where do we find, uh, who has a salaried position and how much they make? I'm I'm looking on the website. I can't.
I I was actually there, um.
I looked it up one day and found it on there, but I couldn't tell you right this second because I had to dig around for a minute.
Yeah, transparent.utah.gov.
Oh, so it's not on the Woodland Hill City?
No, we have to do it on the transparent.utah.gov. And those final numbers. Well, um, we should, we can pay into the Utah.
I don't know off the top of my head.
And we have to put those numbers that we have to pay into the retirement system. So it's transparency.
Transparent.utah.gov.
And I'm happy to break, give that to you and and just shoot me an email. We'll give you the information.
Welcome to city council meetings.
Spencer Wells, Spring Drive. Been here three years on Aquarius.
Nice.
Me too. Is there any way that we, I know that it's on the transparency.utah.gov, but what is preventing us from putting it on the city?
Yeah.
Website? Is there anything that legally or otherwise?
Taxes pay for.
Does, is there anything that that prevents us from doing that? And can we do it starting tomorrow or whenever? Whenever we get around to updating it.
I I I actually don't know.
You'd have to look.
Right now, we're revamping the website, so that might.
But that is something.
Got a little bit of hiccup too. But I, we'd probably need to discuss and check with state statute, right? Because the last thing we want to do is do something that in my opinion makes sense. But we'll double check that. Jody?
And we can put a link.
Yeah, I think a link would be better.
There we go. That would link it straight through so that, because I know that, I mean, I'm not I'm not as age as, uh, the Reverend Sorensen here. However, that doesn't mean I'm tech savvy either. And having a a hyperlink or something on the Woodland Hills webpage is going to be a lot easier where we can just click, click or have a dropdown. Here's, here's what, here's what we're spending the money on. Does that make sense?
For salaries.
Yeah, and and I'll tell you right now, being in the military, anybody can look up DOD, whatever, and they know exactly what I make.
Yeah.
And so that, uh, as a public servant, I I don't see where there would be any kind of.
Same thing on the transparency.
Right.
Yeah, it's it's.
Recipery duty by the city to keep things secret.
Right, no, and that's not the intention.
Yeah, Roger, Roger Fuller again. Um, I've done a fair amount of research on that particular kind of thing, like disclosure of um finances, um, and how the city can do it, what platforms can be used. I didn't, I'm going to go look at this transparent.utah.gov because I really want to see how that works and what it does. I didn't know it existed. But, uh, yeah, there's costs associated. If you wanted to be able to go in and see actual invoices or everything else, you'd have to have that set up and somebody have to maintain it. Uh, you know, and then, you know, it's, it would just be a cost. So you just have to look at it and say, okay, I gotta get that in my budget or not. I gotta get the time to do it.
Right.
And then also even even like, you know, these meetings, you know, I know we have disclosure requirements like twenty-four hours or maybe seven to ten days depending on the meeting. But, you know, it'd be really nice to have feedback from not just this little group of people, but two hundred, four hundred, you know, voters on on a lot of issues before they even come up to vote, right? Like maybe a month or longer, you know, where you live at. But anyways, it is kind of a nurturing process, uh, what you can do and and how you're going to implement it with the staff we have, you know? I mean, that's the other issue, costs associated. I'm really interested in seeing this. Yeah, no, 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 it's not that much.
Okay, that, so it's nominal.
The staff salaries?
Yeah, no, no. So the fee to do any kind of webpage upgrade is nominal. It's just another fee. That's, it it make like. The horse, but yeah, it's just an allocation. It's not a.
It's an allocation.
A hyperlink is free, from my understanding. You just add the hyperlink.
Yeah, no, I, to me, that would be an easy one because to maintain the information is current, that would be difficult.
That's what I was asking you to say.
I mean, then we're benefiting from them.
Like, way and bad, you're done.
All right, David.
Yeah, David Stones, uh, much like you, twenty-six years. Next, actually, a couple days. Um, so just for a quick, uh, almost in the first week that we moved here, and I'm just saying this for just context. I asked for the budget in detail and I was given it. Never once in all the twenty-six years that I've been here, because I've been involved with lots of different committees and stuff, and any kind of requests as a city ever hidden anything. I'm sorry, if you don't have it, you're not looking. I'm just going to be blunt. Okay, and you don't show up to city council. I'm just being blunt because I don't at times. But anytime I do, it has always been available.
Yeah.
And the meeting minutes are always posted. All this stuff is always happening every week, week in, week out, month after month, year after year. And I mean, once again, I'm just speaking for myself because guess what? I ignore a lot of stuff until I need to pay attention when someone wants to raise my taxes and I normally raise my head up and, you know, go look at numbers. But never once has the city in all the twenty-six years I've been here under any administration ever hidden anything. It's always been available.
I I think that's a great point.
Videos of our city council meetings. If you don't want to read it, you can literally just turn on a video and listen. Do it. It's, uh, it's.
YouTube, YouTube channel.
If you have sleep apnea, it's a great way to go to sleep.
There's so many resources. You just have to listen.
All right, well, I I think that we're probably ready to move on. If a member of the council wants to make a motion, then we can proceed along that.
For number five?
I move we close public hearings.
Yeah. I'll second that.
So you you're moving to postpone it?
No, we're moving to close the public hearing.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha. All right.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
And you're welcome to stick around, but just do remember that we're still on a hot mic, please.
So, um, do we need to close the public hearing portion? I I thought that was just an administrative. I'm, I was thinking we, but that's good. We should make a formal announcement. Public hearing portion closed. But we're still voting, still important stuff here. Nice to meet you.
People's on our toes, right?
Thanks, Dan. Thanks for your help.
All right, good job. Thank you.
Okay, now the winner.
Thanks for all your help.
How you doing?
Hey, Ernie. Thank you. Thanks for giving.
Further endeavors.
Yeah, no, I'm.
When's the voting? Somebody's voting.
Right now, yeah. I mean, if we can get a motion, we will be voting on the tax rate. So this is closing.
I mean, for mayor.
Oh, uh, that starts in, uh, when? October, September?
Yeah, it's open now.
Yeah, no matter.
Yeah, I guess that's true. I don't know. I don't concern myself with such things.
I am. I I'm a massive. I appreciate you, brother. Thank you. Okay, you're looking for a motion then, Mayor?
Yeah, let's wait till the den settles down and then we can proceed.
Good.
Let's wait till that den in the back corner settles down.
It picks up, the mic picks up on the sound.
Monica, it's a good time.
I can honestly tell you when people were whispering, I could hear them. I couldn't make out everything they were saying, but the mic is really, really sensitive.
Okay, well, that's good to know. I will be careful what I say about you.
Yeah, you better.
Yeah, we can hear everything in the room and some of it's just a mumble, but it's it's so clear. It's nice.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a step up. All right.
Did she just hear what I just said?
I I don't know. Maybe. Okay, we should, uh, let's, let's move on though.
Describe the hall.
Let's call this meeting an order, so to speak.
I don't have my battery here.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion.
I would like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, setting the certified tax rate for Woodland Hills City twenty twenty-six fiscal year at point zero zero three zero nine three, which is the rate provided to us by the county.
Resulting in a revenue of one point one million, twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. I, we needed to make that point clear too. I actually am a little uneasy about doing this without Jody being in the room.
I'll second that.
She's on the hall. Let me go grab her.
Well, I just want to make sure that the, um, the formalities are kept. So who makes the motion and?
She's not.
She is. Okay.
Again, I'm Mike Huggie, a porcupine.
Thank you.
Very grateful, which I'll do.
We appreciate your comments. Some good insight.
Yeah.
I spent years working, I, so I would actually do the classy chip, the, you know, the type three chip. I I would do it for you, Dot. I would, I was part of the federal super paid program. I I know my roads. And, um, the number one problem is always accountability.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Things, things have changed quite a bit.
Okay. Again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much. And, uh, oh, one question. Did you make Salem pay for their part of that reward there for the the West Loaford?
It was, uh.
Summit Creek.
It was Summit Creek. Yeah, they did.
Okay, good, because they were, they were dragging their feet for like three, four years.
Yeah, they were.
And they wouldn't, they wouldn't return our call. They go to this.
Yeah, no, they 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 pitched in that portion and, uh, that's, that's the reason it was a good time.
We, we elected an attorney as mayor. He chased them down and they were scared and they coughed up.
You know, I'm just, just saying, just a rumor.
Yeah, we've played games together. I go for the jugular, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, 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 one question.
I think I closed the public hearing portion.
I'm sorry, we're waiting.
I'm only kidding.
Way to go, Jody.
We're waiting for Jody.
Okay, uh, Maple Court. Okay.
Yes.
Google Maps is showing it going all the way down into the Three Rivers, Three Bridges. Uh, doesn't, that goes across private property.
Uh, that in all of our agreements with Summit, with Three Bridges as well. That in all of our agreements with Summit, with Three Bridges as well, is not ever going to turn into a road with the current agreement in place. So.
Except as a fire exit.
It is a fire exit.
That's why Google.
But it is not a trend. You can't go through the, into, and it won't turn into that.
The reason being is Mike wants to buy that from Sterling, so he can, you know, keep it forever not being a road. And Sterling can't really sell it, because they say, oh, well, the city's just going to eminent domain it. And when I saw that map, I was concerned.
It is, well, honestly, you have to remember too, that Maple Court is not a road.
It's not a road. I, I get that.
So it is not a city road at all in its current state. It is city property.
Yeah.
That we allow Sterling to use.
Right.
On a daily basis, right?
Probably because they didn't enforce the, the original agreement.
Again, back to your point.
We, we've got an access agreement that we have been talking about even on, with respect to that property. So it, I mean, there, there is a solution, because we would, as a city, like to tighten that up as well.
Yeah.
But let's talk about that another time, so we can.
As Jody comes in.
Well, will you just ask her if she needs to be here when we vote?
Here she comes.
Okay.
Anyway, again, thanks, Ben. Appreciate that. And Mayor.
Thanks, Dan.
Have a good day, Janet. Thank you.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Okay, so Jody, Ben, Ben made a motion to adopt the county rate at the point 003093 and it was seconded by Janet.
Janet.
Okay, and it, this is a roll call vote, correct?
It's not, because it's a resignation, but let's do it just to be on the safe side.
Okay, Janet?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Doral?
Yes.
And Ben?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. And with that, we can adjourn if someone will make that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, oh, you stole it right off my door. Well, you can at least second.
Second that, yeah.
Okay, motion by Carrie, seconded by Doral. We're adjourned. Thanks, you guys.
We'll see you.
Thank you.